Okay, so hello everyone. Today is July 2nd, 2024, and I will call to order the Madison Common Council's Secret Committee Meeting. Um.
Uh-oh. I think it froze. Are you there? Is it just me?
No, you're there. If she's frozen, can I s- am I able to step in and just have you call the roll? Or do we, did we break quorum?
No.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I, I had the phone on. So I'm here. Go on.
Okay, President Figaro Cole. Echoes. Um, I. President Figaro Cole is here. Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Alder Govinda Rajan is on his way. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Aldo Ugare?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney? Alder Curry?
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Um. There you go. So, I, um, the next agenda in the, well, hold on, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from last meeting. Um, do I, can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, John. Second. And is there any discussion about the minutes from last month, last meeting? Alder Curry, please?
I just asked to be counted as abstaining. I wasn't present for the last meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so anybody else? Let me make sure, let me bring up this, um, there you go. Um, I don't see any other hands, so is there any issue recording unanimous vote to adopt the agenda? The agenda minutes? All right, I don't see any conflict on that, so the motion carries? Um. Do we have any registrars, registrants speak, um, today, um, Karen?
No registered speakers.
Nope. All right, so then we move to disclosures and recusals. Any members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the City Ethics Code. Are there any disclosures or recus- recusals? I don't see any hands. So, we can then move on. So the first item for consideration, I'm sorry, I'm moving here between lanes, is Item 2, Legislaw Item 83877, Creating Section 3.07 of the Madison General Ordinance Related to Inform Consent to Permit, to Permit the Office of the City Attorney To Communicate Information Related to Its Representation of the City in Order to Consult With Other Attorneys for Purposes of Collaboration and More Effective Legal Representation. Can I please have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, John John. Um, any, any, um, discussion on this item, any questions for staff? Um, I see Alder Harrington McKinney, uh, has a question. Could you please, Alder, proceed?
Um, yes, I do have a question, and my, um, question is for the city attorney. Um, so in this, the defined client is the city of Madison, is that the client?
Attorney Haas?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Alder.
Okay, and, um, you know, just summarizing, um, um, codifying it now, uh, because in the description, it says that, um, uh, um, Attorneys have been exchanging this information back and forth for us quite a while. Could you tell me why, uh, we're codifying it now?
Sure, that, uh, thanks for the question, Alder. Uh, I can give a little
Overview.
bit of an overview as well. To answer your question, I guess the short answer is because this issue really came to light as a result of a recent opinion that the American Bar Association issued specific to the use of listservs by attorneys. And so I think that the, um, legal profession as a whole, and particularly uh, municipal attorneys in our practice were a little bit caught off guard by this opinion because it really was, um, you know, raised some questions about how we've always really done business. And I can get into that a little bit about the particulars of it. Um, but to answer your question is because in the last month or so, there was an opinion issued by the American Bar Association regarding its model rules. Its model rules really serve as a basis for a lot of states' rules for its, for its attorneys, the ethics rules for its attorneys. So Wisconsin has a very similar rule to the AB model rules, and so we needed to take this opinion into account, um, in how we conduct our business. Um, and so I, to get a little bit into the substance of it, what this opinion said was that, um, in sharing information on a listserv, and this is an example of, you know, the rules trying to keep up with technology, although we've had listservs for years, um, you know, the general rule, of course, is that an attorney is not supposed to reveal any confidences of a client, any confidential information. The, the rule actually says, we cannot even disclose who we represent as an attorney. Now that makes probably more sense if you're a private attorney representing a private client than an attorney representing a public body where especially within House Counsel, everybody knows it's public knowledge who we represent. Um, the concern raised by the, by the, the ethics rule is that um, a couple of concerns that there's, you know, a kind of a default rule that we're not to disclose information about our representation of a client, who the client is, what the legal issue is, you know, legal strategy, considerations about liability, things like that. And the rule technically says, even if some of that information is public knowledge, the attorney is not supposed to be the one disclosing that information. Now, when it comes to listservs, there's a particular concern in some cases because, for instance, the State Bar of Wisconsin sponsors a bunch of listservs for communities of attorneys. They might be real estate attorneys or litigation attorneys, you know, personnel attorneys, and you don't always know who all the members of that listserv are. And so those listservs are very useful to say, for an attorney to say, hey, I'm, I'm dealing with this legal issue. Um, has anybody run into it before? Can you point me to some resources? Has your client dealt with this in the past? Those are sort of the ways that we use a listserv, and if you don't know who's all on the listserv, there could potentially be an attorney on the other side of your matter on the list, on the listserv, and you could be revealing information that your client wouldn't necessarily want revealed, even if it's public. So that's kind of the, the basic, um, framework. Now, when it comes to municipal law, the League of Municipalities has a listserv. We've always participated both in, you know, posing questions and also responding to questions, frankly, because, you know, we, we have more attorneys than most municipalities in the state. We've run across things generally maybe sooner than other municipalities have, and we can help provide some resources or guidance. Um, now, the reason I say it's a little bit different in municipal law is typically we are not dealing with legal issues where there's another municipality that we are on the other side, we're an adverse party, where another attorney might be gleaning something from a question that we posed. If we, if we do run into that situation, say that we had a dispute with a, a neighboring municipality, we would be careful not to be discussing that, you know, in a broader, with a broader um, pool of, of attorneys. Um. And so we don't really have that concern about, uh, disclosing information to an opposing party or an opposing attorney. Um. Secondly, you know, uh, most of the information that we are dealing with is already, already out in the public realm, uh, for the most part, or it's subject to public disclosure. Now, I'll give you one example where it might not be. Um, sometimes around, um, times when municipalities are renegotiating their contracts with, with unions, an attorney might post on the listserv, hey, what's your bargaining position about raises for whoever teams serves law enforcement? And there may be, you know, sort of a survey, um, to try to get information about, um, you know, how, what people are doing in their negotiations. That information not, may not be technically public yet. Um, but it is helpful for attorneys around the state to try to get a gauge about, you know, where, how negotiations are going. Um. You know, we, we use a listserv sometimes if we are trying to work on a new ordinance that might be eh, uh, a little bit uh, in a novel area, or maybe some sticky legal issues where we want to steer clear of any, um, litigation or challenges to the ordinance, and it may be something that a bunch of attorneys have dealt with before, or maybe it's a really niche area where, you know, may only one other municipality in the state has dealt with it. Um, but we can really benefit from their experience. So these issues, we run into them both in using the listserv and in, um, a weekly Zoom call that the League of Municipality sponsors, where they invite any of their member attorneys to participate in this weekly call. Typically, there's 25 or 30 attorneys on the Zoom call. And again, it's a kind of a free exchange of ideas. You know, what are the common issues that municipalities are dealing with? Um, what kind of, um, you know, legal positions are folks taking? So, um, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll try to pause there. Hopefully, that sort of explains the, kind of the framework we're dealing with. Um, and what we're trying to accomplish by this ordinance is, in a way, I look at it as a formality, but in a way, it's very important that the council understands that you know, the city is our client. Um, and we need to have the approval of the city to continue to engage in those types of conversations. And I would, I would caveat that with saying this is not only for me, but for other attorneys in, in our office. Um, you know, we have attorneys that are dealing with very specialized litigation, and there may not be a lot of attorneys around the state who have dealt with that. And it helps us to be able to pick up the phone and talk to an attorney either from another municipality or the state, or a federal agency possibly, or even a private attorney to get the benefit of their experience. And again, we, you know, as attorneys for the city, we certainly are going to be using our judgment to make sure that we're not revealing any information that would disadvantage the city as our client. And the, the last thing I'll say is that, in talking with the, um, I, I happen to be on the, the Professional Ethics Committee for the State Bar of Wisconsin, and we actually discussed this at our quarterly meeting last week, and I had a conversation with the staff attorney who, uh, answers the ethics hotline for attorneys and issues a lot of guidance. And, um, he said that when, you know, technically, when an attorney represents an organization, they can seek this consent from the chief executive official of the organization, a CEO or president or something like that. So I think technically, we could rely on, you know, going to the mayor and saying, hey, this is what we'd like to talk about, is it okay with you? But we felt that we should also get the consent of the council, for, for the council to be aware that this would, is, you know, what our normal practice is. It gives a council an opportunity to raise any concerns they might have, or exceptions they might want to invoke about what we can share, and, and also, um, uh, you know, our intent, as we put in the ordinance, I believe, is that, you know, this is something that would be covered every time we do an orientation for new alders, so that they're aware of what the council approved in the past, and, and, you know, can be aware so that if anybody wants to change anything going forward, they would have the opportunity to, to do that. So that prob- probably is more than what your question was, but hopefully it kind of lays the groundwork for the, for the committee.
Yeah, uh, thank you so very much for laying the groundwork, because you really moved into the last half of what my question would have been when you talked about that, um, informed consent and then looping in the council, because that was one of the questions that I was going to ask, is, is that how, um, with this informed consent, do we loop in the council in terms of those decisions? So you went right into that, and I thank you for, um, you know, for going into that. So, um, Madam Chair, that is my questions, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alda McKinney. Uh, I have, um, Alda Meatsy on the, on the queue, but Attorney Haas, can, can you quickly, um, define listserv for us? Like, I think I, based on the explanation that you provided, I have an idea what it means, but, um, can you, can you just give the definition of that particular term? Is it, is it like a distribution list? Is a, an email? And how do people add themselves to this? Um, you know, do they have the credentials to be on the list?
Right.
Leadership fee? How, what, what is, can you help me understand that part real quick before we go?
Sure. No, i- it's a good question. So, I mean, generically, a listserv, yeah, it's any group of email addresses where people, uh, join on the listserv. Um. Uh, you know, on any type of topic. Now, I, in our case, I mentioned the League of Municipality listserv, so that is open to any municipal attorney that represents a municipality that is a member of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. So that's not every municipality in the state, but it's a good share of them, and I would say all of the, you know, larger municipalities are members. Um. So, an attorney would, uh, you know, the league, uh, regularly invites attorneys to join this list. All you have to do is say, I would like to be on the list, and you're added to the list, and then you know, people can shoot out questions or provide resources, you know, we're heavily involved in, in election law, so I will, um, occasionally send out um, some developments that have happened regarding election law, or appoint people to resources, especially uh, when we're getting close to an election, because a lot of municipal attorneys, this are not as well-versed or don't have as much experience in election law. Um, but that's not the only listserv. As I mentioned, you know, the State Bar has, uh, listservs. We have separate, you know, sections for like government uh, lawyers, a government lawyers division, so they have a listserv. I would say that's not as active of a listserv. Um, but there may be listservs for other divisions that some of our attorneys might be members of, whether it's, you know, real estate or tax law, um, or, or any other, uh, you know, planning or zoning issues, things like that.
Thank you. Um, Alda Meatsy?
Yes, I just wanted to ask for, um, you know, so I could look up this myself, the citation of this American Bar Association opinion?
Mm-hmm. I, I believe it's linked in the, in the memo that's attached to Legislaw.
Okay. And also too, given the budget, um, coming up, how, uh, what is the cost, uh, do you anticipate to the, to the city for this collaboration?
Oh, I mean, there isn't any additional costs. The city is a, a member of the League of Municipalities, so the city pays a annual membership dues, but that, that's not really for this listserv, that's for us to be a member, and there are, you know, all of the city departments, um, can benefit from that membership. They sponsor, you know, conferences, educational seminars, um, and so there, there isn't any additional costs associated with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else on the queue. Um, last call for additional questions to Attorney Haas? Okay, um, I, is there any, um, is there any issue recorded unanimous vote to adopting this, um, change? If you are against, just please raise your hand. I don't see any signs, so we will go ahead and record this as a unanimous consent. Already. So then the next item in the agenda is, I'm gonna oh, I passed myself right here, there you go. Just give me one second to open that agenda again. There you go. It's Legislaw Item 83917, adopting the sexual harassment appendix to the elected and appointed official code of ethic conduct. Could I please get a motion?
Motion to adopt.
May I please have a second?
Second.
Um, that's Alda Martinez Rutherford. Thank you. Um, we don't have, last, last time that we discussed this item, we had, um, Erin from Human Resources do a presentation. She's, um, on vacation. Um. This week, however, this item was referred to counsel by Alda Harrington McKinney, so if you please want to go ahead and address the board with your concerns, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam President. Um, it wasn't my concerns, it's that, um, I recall at, uh, and please correct me because I might be wrong, at the last Executive Committee meeting, we, um, uh, this addendum was introduced, and we ran out of time, and we did not get to a full discussion of it. And then when I saw it on the council agenda, it just reminded me that we, uh, and perhaps I wasn't on the Executive Committee when it was discussed, but I know at that meeting, we ran out of time. Um, because I think the, the recording had stopped, something happened, and we did not, I, I felt we did not have a full discussion of, of this at all. And so that's why I wanted to bring it back. Um, I wanted to bring it back for us to, um, to discuss, and there were some key items in there that, you know, I had questioned about, um, and so that's why I, I pulled it off the agenda. Um, so how do you want me to proceed since there is no presentation? Should I just go ahead and, and dive in?
You're muted.
Thank you. Attorney Haas was, um, instrumental helping us put this together, so I think he will be capable of answering any questions that you may have. So if you can, if you'd like to proceed with the questions, that'd be, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so, um, uh, Attorney Haas, I, hmm, one of my questions is, is that, um, and as I, and as I read the addendum, a, a lot of the languages, I, I found a lot of the language in, um, the, what was it? The equal rights advocate in terms of, you know, what sexual harassment was and how, um, the definitions. And then the thing that caught my eye is, is that, um, let's see. Um. Okay, and, and so it says, and I was just quoting this from the California. The California law protects all workers, um, including independent contractors, and it, um, talked about, um, um, California employees with five or more employees must provide sexual harassment prevention training to employees and supervisors um, at least once every two years. And so, um, um, for me, I was looking at education before we legislate, and it sound, it felt that we were jumping into the, um, the legislation part without the education part. So, so, um, so full disclosure for me, and I'll, I'll own this, um, because my, my colleague is here. Um, I, I looked at the part where it said about, um, misgendering, and, um, when I was, um, uh, accused, or not accused, accused is not a, not a good word, that, um, I was identified misgendering myself in one of, uh, of a committee meeting, and which was like, oh my God, I didn't do that, I didn't do that. And so I had to go back and look at it, and then what, what I needed, and, and I immediately
It's five o'clock.
I immediately, you know, uh, expressed, um, you know, my, uh, my apologies. But it is the educational piece that we're missing, and I'm wondering why now we are, um, jumping into, that's why I had the question about codifying. It's like, why are we not educating before we are legislating? And so for me, I mean, um, uh, it broke me to even think that I had misgendered someone, and then it said some, a piece in here where consistently misgendering, so it's, it sounded like to me that there is a preponderance of this happening all the time. Don't know, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but for me, as I sit in this space, so that I am aware of how I show up and what I say in spaces where I represent, you know, educate, educate me, and I'm not the, um, and I've switched my, my, um, because I don't put um, my gendering on, on my name. I purposely didn't do that because, you know, I'm, I'm open. I don't have any restrictions. But this situation made me even pause and rethink that, and so now I'm going to, to, to be engaged in it. And so I wanted for us to come, and, um, and so since, um, uh, Attorney Haas, you're the one that's answering this. Um, why, we have a Department of Civil Rights, why now are we, um, adding this addendum? Uh, where we've got the Department of Civil Rights, um, doing what they do? And why aren't we educating rather than jumping into legislating? That's my question. I'll pause because I want to hear your response to that.
Um, sure, uh, thanks, Alder. I think, um, a, a couple of notes, um, you know, the, this, this proposed addition to the Code of Conduct is directed at the conduct of alders. And so the city has a very, very comprehensive anti-discrimination and harassment policy. comprehensive anti-discrimination and harassment policy, APM three dash five. All city employees are required to undergo a training regarding that APM on a regular basis. Um, you know, uh, initially, right during the orientation, and then I think every couple of years or three years are, they're required, we are required to undergo a training. So that is happening for city staff. Um, you know, and all of that training is available for alders if alders want to participate in it. Um, and would, if they feel like they would benefit from, you know, any additional background or education about, you know, what the, what the city's policies are, you know, what kind of behavior constitutes harassment, um, you know, or is problematic. So this particular proposed policy, um, I, I think was intended to help to flesh out for alders more specific, um, standards of behavior, expectations of behavior. And to, eh, you know, we do have a, an avenue already through APM three dash five. Um, if there is a, a, a city staff member who feels like they have been mistreated by an alder, they can use that process. This is really, I think, intended to fill a gap where there really wasn't a policy that applied to the behavior of an alder towards the public. The public can really use APM three dash five as an avenue to file a complaint, because that is a workplace, that's a mayoral directive regarding the workplace environment. Um, and so this policy was really, I think, intended to, um, to apply to all their behavior, either, you know, to other alders, other elected officials, or, or members of the public. And it provides some slightly different options for, um, for people to address that behavior. Um, and Karen's reminding me this would also apply to all members of, of city boards, commissions, and committees as well. So it would be, you know, broader reaching. Um, you know, the, we've talked about this before, the, the tricky thing in applying a policy to elected officials, specifically members of the council, is, you know, what is the enforcement mechanism? We, we don't have the same enforcement mechanisms that we have for, for city staff who would violate a policy that could be suspended or potentially terminated, or, or given warnings. Um, you know, for elected officials, that's all driven by state statute. An elected official can only be removed by a recall of initiated by the voters or, uh, by the council after there's a hearing in, in due process and everybody has a chance to kind of present their case about what happened and whether or not there should be any consequences. So I think this policy tries to fill some gaps and thread, thread a needle a little bit in at least providing an avenue for individuals to, to raise a concern. Um, if they feel like there's been inappropriate behavior on the part of an alder and, and provide an avenue to bring a complaint, to have, to have that complaint looked into and have a report completed, um, uh, and, and hopefully to, to try to bring some, some closure, some resolution to whatever the incident might be. As far as why now, I, you know, we, we were asked to help, you know, draft this. Um, I think that's, uh, uh, you know, it might be a, a question for the, for the sponsor more than for us.
Oh, okay. So, uh, so, uh, yes, and I do want to ask the, the, the sponsor. And the, the other thing is, um, um, you had said that, um, the alder training was not to have this included, and the alder training, it was not mandatory for it to be a part of it. And, you know, I, um, I, my, one of my questions is, uh, why isn't it mandatory? And the other is, is that when I read it, um, uh, it sounded very subjective to me, uh, and that's just me, I'm just putting it out there because that's how I read it. Um, and, um, uh, especially the part with the misgendering and, and I, and, and, um, Alder Madison, I want to thank you so very much for bringing it to my attention because had you not brought it to my attention, I wouldn't have even known it. And so, um, and so that, that's the piece that I am struggling with is, is that, um, it seems very, uh, intentional, it's, it's, it's subjective, and it leaves, it leaves it on the chief of staff to determine, you know, um, uh, and I guess I'm, let, let me just kind of back off because I, I don't even know where to go with it, and I see a lot of hands up and I need help in, in trying to process this. Because I definitely think that as part as we are going through the training for alders, this is a critical piece that, that it, it should be a mandatory piece of the training for alders. If this is happening, and then, um, i- it should be included and not just, well, if the alder thinks that, you know, they need it, you know, I would have been one of the ones that like, I don't need it, but, but it's clear that I needed it. And so, so having it to be a part of the training, a required training, um, seems to fit better for, for me, it fits better than, um, to have this, this coming forth the way it's reading for me. And so I'll pause and allow someone else to speak.
Uh, uh, thank you, Alder. I would just, uh, one note, I mean, I, you know, whether or not it becomes a required part of training for alders, well, that's really up to the council and the council office. I think there's a little bit of, um, sensitivity to, to the fact that, you know, any APM is a mayoral directive. And so there's a kind of a separation of powers, powers issue, right, with can a mayoral directive apply to elected members of the city council? So if you want to make it a required part of your alder orientation, um, you know, that's, that's completely up to the council. I would, uh, just also say as far as, um, you know, the, the misgendering component, I think for the most part, the prohibited conduct examples that are included are pretty standard examples that you'll see in any anti-discrimination or anti-harassment policy. Um, misgendering might be, not be as common, might be a sort of a newer thing, but I would note that it says, um, including but not limited to consistently misgendering an individual. I, in my mind, that's not really aimed at sort of a, a one-time mistake. It's sort of repeatedly and intentionally misgendering somebody. Um, that, that's the way I would look at it.
Um, thank you, Alder. I, I do want to address some of this, but I, there are so many hands up that I, I just want to go through and get those out first. So Alder Martinez-Rudolph, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I definitely want to say that this was not brought a, about you specifically. This was brought about the, it came to light for me, um, because I'm the first trans person who's been elected. Um, so for future generations, I feel like it's very important that we have something that protects people. And also knowing that we have a lot of people who serve on boards, um, and commissions in the city that are, um, feeling a little bit more comfortable with it, you know, expressing their gender in a different way. And, and there are multiple individuals who I know use different pronouns than, uh, non-binary pronouns. Um, a big part of it was, uh, even though I, I'm just really signing onto the sponsorship today, but it's definitely been in, in the process and in the works and talking about it, um, is that it's not about me, it's not about you, it's about the future of the city. And knowing the way our country is going, um, there may be a person who in the future is, uh, not respectful and doesn't believe that, uh, individuals like me deserve to, to be properly gendered and, and respected. And so for me, it just feels really important to make sure that we're caring for those who come after us and for individuals who, who decide to step in, and they will know that that the city has their back and is protecting them. So, uh, thank you very much for, for one, being able to talk about this and bring this up without me having to initiate it. And um, I'm really grateful to have all the colleagues that I have who have respected me so much. Um, and I can't express my gratitude in that more than I, than I have already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Martinez. Um, Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, go back to Alder McKinney, uh, Harrington McKinney's comments and just note that I don't even, I just want to know, I don't think I was aware of this item yet when we had our session. And I do want to just speak to the, um, to the alders' comments around education. And that was a conversation that Alder, uh, Harrington McKinney and I, it was just like, hey, you know, this is sort of an instance that happened. He, you know, here is why it might have been, um, or is an issue, that kind of thing, and just sort of bringing out those points. But I just want, I do think it's important for this, the entire body to actually have some level of education around uh, gender identity, only because even myself who, you know, super involved, super engaged, I feel I'm, I'm well-versed. I did not get that education until I had conversations with friends who worked at our, um, some local organizations. And in that conversation with them, I learned where I was still sort of like messing up. And so it was super useful for me and it was very helpful for me, and it allowed me to not create harm in spaces with folks, um, unintentionally to, you know. So I do think it's important for the entire body to have access to some sort of education. Um, so, but again, Alder McKinney was super receptive to the conversation that we had, and I think, you know, just building on that conversation for all of us would be important.
Thank you, Alder Madison. So, um, I, I'd like to also put my two cents on this, since I'm kind of the sponsor of the, of this, um, resolution. Um, I, I mean, this is, to me, it's not any different than a, a unconscious bias training situation where I feel like everybody should be taking those trainings and getting educated in that perspective. But I also understand that those trainings are really not for everybody. Like, if you go in there because you're forced to do it, you're not going to be as receptive to get that information. You kind of have to be on your own journeys sometimes to, to absorb the information in a way that becomes relevant. So having said that, the city has a lot of, um, resources for us to grow into, you know, to become better allies and to, to train ourselves better in how to manage these different circumstances. I know that there's, I have seen multiple emails coming from the council office and from the civil rights office detailing the training times and the ways for, for us to, to, um, to sign up. However, having said that, if the body, as, uh, Attorney has mentioned, if the body as a whole wants to incorporate this as a policy that is required, just like the city requires for the employees to have the trainings done, then that is, that could be a separate resolution. I mean, in this particular resolution, the intent is mainly to create awareness, um, among elected officials and the ba, and the committees of their own surroundings. I mean, just the same way that Alda Madison was just expressing about, about finding herself in situations where she might be versed on, but still, still messing up. I feel like we as alders, we come in, we are just common people coming in from different ways of lives, and we get thrown into this role to be exposed to all kinds of circum, circumstances. So for me, this policy is not only to protect the public and to protect other people, but also to protect ourselves. So if anything, um, what I would like this policy to become is a part of our onboarding training as here is the, eh, the Board of Ethics, here is the, the addendum. These are the things that we recommend for you to be aware of, like, you know, basic things, like really train us on how to take a picture with a bunch of people on the, on the field, right? Like, things like that that we're not used to, um, may not be used to or exposed to. So just the same way that, that an alder or a person sitting on a chair, on a committee can be behaving badly, the same claims can be done against you when you don't even know aware of what you were doing. So to me, the training, this policy, every alder is, is, I think it's in, we, all alders are required to have this training once a year, and the same for the committees. So that part is, will remain there, that every year you'll be reminder of, of this resolution. But the part about forcing people to go to trainings, that to me is a different issue. So if, if, again, if the eleven alders want to come together and, and make that a requirement, that's fine. Would that be effective? I don't know. It would be effective and what the tracking mechanism for that would be and all that stuff. But I hear the intent of the policy is, is a dual thing. It's, it goes both ways. It's to protect ourselves and educate ourselves better and show you that they are, again, the intent of the whole ethic, ethics, um, um, Code of Ethics was clearly rooted on education first, and this doesn't negate that. We are again saying, education first, here are the resources that we have available for you to, to access whenever you are ready to, to go through that journey. And this is not going to go away. Like Alder Martinez said, there's a lot of people in the city. She, she might be the first alder that sits here as a transgender, but we have people in the city that are already, you know, that are in her, in her own shoes. And as Alder McKinney said earlier, it's, it's not relevant, it might not be relevant for me to, to say my pronouns, for example, but because, you know, I, most people is, you know, we, we, we don't have, this is how we identify ourselves and we feel like, okay, well, you should know that I'm a she or whatever. However, I had learned to turn that around and say, you know, I'm not using the pronouns for me. I'm using the pronouns so I can practice, you know, on making sure I keep, I'm intentional on listening to other people's pronouns. And it's hard, and I, you know, I find myself apologizing sometimes, but it, it's just a matter of you personally taking that journey. So forcing people to do it is, is counterproductive in my opinion. So I don't know if that answers your questions, Alder McKinney, of the intent behind it. Um, but that's really, my intent was to call attention. So I'm glad that we're having this conversation because that's really my intent, call attention and, and maybe, um, inspire people to go into those spaces and learn more. So with that said, I got Alder Harrington McKinney back in the queue. And you're muted. Let me see if I can unmute you.
So I'll, I'll, I'll yield to, uh, I see, uh, Vice President Duncan and also Alda Curry. So I'll yield to that because, and then I'll circle back around with my question.
Yeah, thank you. Alder, Vice President, um, Duncan.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question for, for Common Council Chief of Staff. Isn't the code already provided? Don't we get training on that as new alders?
Every year.
Yes, that's correct. So there's a couple of, of ways that are currently, it's currently, um, dealt with. So one is, and Alder Duncan, you may remember, Vice President Duncan, you may remember this, um, given that you, you are one of the ones who came in after the code was passed, is, um, in the small group piece of the orientation, the meeting with my, with, with the office staff, we went through the handbook in detail, including the Code of Con, the Elected and Appointed Official Code of Conduct, which is provided to everyone. Uh, so if this, if this appendix passes, of course, it will be incorporated into that document and into that process. Another, um, Into that document and into that process. Another um thing I wanted folks to. Note, and um, President Figaro Cole mentioned it as well, as part of the um, resolution that was passed um by the council. On uh, it looks like January third, two thousand and twenty-three, it's required that every committee put the code on. Their agenda annually for discussion. So not just pass it out annually or something like that, but to have a discussion of it. So. That's part of what you have passed as well. And then I'd also like to draw your attention to my um, updates. Uh, I I put um. The reason I highlight trainings in those updates is because a lot of, something that President Figaro Cole mentioned, which is that uh, everyone. You know, there's so many different soft skills, so many different kinds of skills that that everyone can benefit from, right? As you all know, being elders, it's it's just, it taps every skill that. You could possibly need. And so because the city has improved and expanded. Uh, their course offerings and they're free to elders to take, I um. I uh, I highlight those for you because my hope is that anyone who can. Can go ahead and do that. And I know some elders have taken, taken the opportunity. And then I I always ask if we could just let me know how it goes because. HR has recently developed um, an option where we could put in requests for like a team training, for example. So like a special. Um, a special cohort or a special offering for us. Um, so I just wanted to point out those, it's part of why I do it. Um, the inclusive workplace training, I also want to draw folks' attention to that. So um. One of the things that happened when it, so it was passed as an APM, but the council in December, December first, I believe of two thousand and twenty. Um, actually passed a resolution supporting and and directing implementation of the inclusive workplace policy. So. It went beyond um, the communication just to staff as an as a, as an APM, as a mayoral. Um, memorandum, but it was also then embraced by the council and 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 um, sort of highlighted by the council as well. So I have provided and I've done it again today in my update and I'll continue to do so. Links to the resources. There's a gender inclusive language training, which is, I think, so interesting, so helpful. I learn something new every time I read the resources. There's a language guide, there's a resource guide. And if you want to delve deeper into the question of what does an inclusive workplace look like? A gender inclusive workplace, there's additional training as well that the city offers. Again, this is free to elders. And so anyone who can, I really recommend it. And also those resources are free and don't require. Uh, any kind of training. So you can start, certainly I recommend folks start there and 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 then we go from there. So I I I wanted to just highlight those three points. To get on folks' radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Duncan. Um, Alda Curry, you're next in the queue.
Thank you, President Chair. Um, I just wanted to weigh in with a comment and then maybe a suggestion based on the. The comments that have happened uh, today. So as the Chair of the Subcommittee that put this forward and then um. Receiving unanimous approval from the council, I am happy um, that, I'm not happy, but. Um, appreciate the fact that uh, council members are continuing to add to it as we learn and grow and experience things. And so I do agree with um, the comments of my peers talking about it being in in a more inclusive part of the code that we all should. Immerse ourselves in regularly as elders, but also members um, representing the council on BCCs. Um, and then the conversation on whether training education should be mandated. Just a suggestion and knowing that this next spring election, um, the council will be turning over and so onboarding will be. Developed, um, influenced and recommended by the Executive Committee itself and um, supporting the council leadership. So maybe a suggestion for council office staff or council leaderships to consider when that time comes of. Um, the kind of checklist or the guides that we receive from council office staff. Maybe providing suggested trainings and adding um, the gender inclusive. Um, language and any other uh, trainings that are offered that highlight the diversity of our city. Um, I think would be a great idea. And then again. Holding ourselves accountable as we all do sign and review that Code of Ethical Conduct every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alda Curry. Any other?
No.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Alder McKinney.
So now I'll circle back around. Um, this has been a very good conversation. And a very needed conversation. Um, I could sign on board and absolutely support. Uh, President, I can do that because what I've heard is what we're all saying. But what I have, what I have not heard is like, uh, is recommended. Um, and um, you know, the boards, committees and commissions, you know, I sat on a commission. And uh, Alder, if it had not been, you know, and I'm giving accolades to um. Alder Madison because my eyes were really open. Um, you know, um, in their work plan, it said that, you know. This should be done, you know, kind of, you know, maybe every year and I can't remember the language. And so what 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 I want to put forward is is that. It's not recommended. I mean, if we're gonna do a sledgehammer, let's do a sledgehammer. I mean, you know, you know, um. Uh, doing the amendment is one thing, but if we are really serious about this. Uh, the legislation is a piece of it, but what we can be doing is to say that it is required, not mandatory. It is required. We spend that time, you know, wrestling with this so that we can be well informed. Um, in our boards, committees and commissions, they have to be, we'll make mistakes. And I talked with Christie and she says, you know what? We're gonna make mistakes. I'm gonna make mistakes and you better believe when I make one and it comes to my attention, I'm gonna say, I'm sorry, I screwed up and like. I'm I'm registered in my brain. But but let's, let's look at educating, strong education. Building our city up from the the bottom up because I'm sure in some departments, you know, it is purposeful. I'm sure that that's still happening in. Some, some departments. I heard it, it was happening over in the county side. But but until. Um, the the legislation part is not going to make it happen, but a strong requirement of education. And educate then legislate. And I'm hoping that, you know, my colleagues will not just let legislate this and will sign off on and let it pass. But but, you know, I'm taking it personally and I hear you taking it personally as well. And so it should be a strong. Component of our onboarding, not just for elders, because, you know, it's not just for me, it's not, you know, for my colleague. But it really is, you know, it throughout the city. And so our boards, committees. Are not as well informed about this. And if we're gonna really make a difference, I'd like to see it. Um, you know, I I am, I I still, I want to educate before we legislate. And so um, I didn't sign on. Um, as a sponsor, but this conversation, I'm hoping will lead us to something that is not just, you know, add some new words of. And so legislating uh, rather than educating. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Alda Govindarajan?
Thank you. A quick question. Is this something that we're going to be voting on today?
Yes.
Okay. I I would like to call the previous question after Alder Uguere speaks.
Okay, sure. Uh, Alda Uguere, you, um, please?
Yes, I just uh, want to bring to this uh, a little perspective of someone. Who was in the workplace and serving on quite a few nonprofits. In a different age when there were no such policies and no such education. I want to thank uh. Alder Harrison McKinney for provoking this discussion about the relationship between the legislation uh, and the training. I I think they're intimately involved. They're both required. What are you going to train? Important part of the training is is training to the requirements of a policy. And a policy is worthless without uh, implementation through training and making it generally aware. But one of the things that I learned. Because I drafted a lot of early policies for companies and nonprofits that didn't have anti-harrassment policies. Is that it was welcomed by those who may have been suffering from. Uh, some port, some form of harassment, but it was also welcomed by everybody else who had clarity as to how the process would work. And how you could avail yourself of it and how we could hold each other as colleagues and teammates. Uh, to a better standard than used to exist in the workplace. So I. Uh, I'd also like to thank the, all the effort that went into crafting this. It's very familiar language to me. I think it's very. Uh, actionable and very educable and I'm certainly supportive. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the queue. We have a motion to adopt in a second. Um. I'm just gonna ask a question. I, if we need to do a roll call, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, Alder Alder McKinney. So um, Karen, could you please do a roll call?
All right, Vice President Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Uguere?
Aye.
And Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
One, two, three, four, five. Five ayes, one no.
Okay, so we, the number is the motion passes and I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for the conversation. I really appreciate it. I I think that's something that we can all agree on. Um, that these conversations are worth having. And are opportunities for grow, individual grow um, in any of them. So then, so thank you all. So the next item on the agenda is. Legistar eighty-four, two, one, thirteen, twenty twenty-five Common Council Office Budget Requests. Um. Ms. Karen, do you have a?
Yes. Okay, so I wanted to bring to CCEC the um. The the information about the Office Budget Request and get your feedback and direction on it. Um, it needs to be introduced or it needs to be submitted by the nineteenth. So I was thinking we would talk today. If you feel, if you had, if you had, you wanted to just be done today and make a motion to. Whatever it may be, that's okay. Otherwise, I plan to come back on the sixteenth to wrap things up with you. So I wanted to give you a couple pieces of information. And I also have folks from Finance here to help us um, with the nuances. So. I'm going to share my screen if I can do it correctly here. I always. Always, I think I'd be used to this by now, after all these years. Okay, do you see? Okay, great. So um, as you know, from the attachment, we have our target memo. Um, we received from, which is instructions from Finance, um, which they give every agency their own target memo with their numbers in it. And um, the base budget is a ninety-nine percent cost to continue budget, which for us is one point, one million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And in the base budget, the only thing I would would um, do is dedicate fifty-five hundred from the Alder Training Budget. Specifically for six multi-district budget engagement events throughout the city in twenty twenty-five, so that we don't have the difficulties we had this year with. Sorting things out in terms of older expense accounts and so on and so forth. We would have dedicated funds, but that's not new money. Um, it's just a kind of a statement of intent about that particular money. But the thing that I really wanted to also talk to you about is, as you're probably aware, as I know you're aware. Um, the mayor asked all the other agencies to cut um, to give a five percent reduction scenario. And although the council office has traditionally been um, able to make. To to offer a cost to continue budget, um, I wanted to illustrate for you what it would take to do a five percent reduction to our budget. So this is here for your, 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 your information. Um, this is how I got to. To that five percent reduction and what I would propose if you chose to go ahead with a five percent reduction budget. Happy to answer questions.
Alda Field, do you have some questions for staff?
A brief one. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Karen, for preparing and bringing this. Um, I wanted to ask for context on the bottom two bullet points. Funding for professional development and society memberships. Are those amounts the full balance of those line items or would this leave remaining money in those line items?
Nope. Those are the full bo- balance. I eliminated. Um, I limited everything. Everything here is an elimination, the only, except for reducing all their expense accounts. I didn't eliminate all their expense accounts, but everything else is eliminated, yes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alda Field. Alda Govindarajan?
Thank you. Um, Karen, can you explain, there is a ninety-three hundred dollar that we had approved for the twenty twenty-four budget for working with. The university on that housing survey. Was that just a one-time fund or does that go forward?
Yes, so that in fact was, if you look at the, I also attached the twenty twenty-four, I'm gonna pull it out, let me find it here. Shoot. Twenty twenty-four council budget, so you could um, I have too many tabs. I'm so sorry. I'm opening too many tabs in a hurry here. Uh, one moment. Um, now, did I close what I needed? Probably. Uh, that has been the short, the short answer to that before I could, I get full mixed with too many tabs is, that was actually removed from the budget, uh, the twenty twenty-four budget, um, Alder, or. I'm told, um, Budget Analyst, um, Betsy York is here. She may be able to to confirm that, but it's definitely not in our budget currently.
That's correct. It was removed in twenty twenty-four. It was a one-time funding.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and then when it came to, um, you had just mentioned the professional staff, um. Uh, elimination. Do you believe that's going to? Harm the Common Council staff in any way, like the experiences that you guys seek, the the conferences that you go to? Um, I would like to hear a little bit more about that.
Sure, yeah. I think any elimination of anything that we have in the way of prof- professional development, training, opportunity to go to conferences. Um, Larissa and I went to the um, last year, we went to the. Uh, International City County Managers Association Conference, which had a huge focus on community engagement as well as. Board, um, Board Manager Relations, um, was very useful. Um, we got, we brought a lot of things home, including things that we're still reviewing because we were able to keep the the materials beyond the time. And um, you know, we have, we put a li- we put Larissa through the IAP two training, which is the. The Community Engagement um, Forum structure that the the city is 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 moving towards and embracing through performance excellence. Um, if we eliminated a budget, we would have no money for anything. So not even the YWCA Summit, which I know is a very popular. An encouraged activity for staff to attend, um, which is very, very valuable, the Racial Justice Summit. And so, yeah. We wouldn't have any of that. So if somebody wanted to go to something, it would be on their own dime.
Do you, are there other places to cut funding to reach that five percent reduction in favor of keeping the conference money?
I mean, the thing with this is that, so we looked at everything. We tend to go under on budget, on older expense accounts. Every year, some folks don't, other folks don't spend anything. Um, so those, those, those are consistently, we go under. Um, and Betsy's here to help with some of the 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 fine tune stuff here. But um. We have had, this is the first year that we've had a full complement of staff. So in the past, we've had. Um, also money that we haven't spent from salaries because we haven't had full, we haven't had, we've had vacancies. Um, that's not going to be the case this year, knock on wood. Um, or in twenty twenty-five, knock on wood, right? Um, and uh, beyond that. You know, I, I wanted to do, I came to Alder Expense Accounts last, you know, I I looked. You know, I I looked at this like, can I get, how can I get there? Can I get there without the expense accounts? Because I I know, you know, technically you all use those accounts to to do your outreach, to do your postcards, to do all that stuff. And I couldn't do it. Doesn't mean, you know, I mean, you're you're certainly welcome to sacrifice more of that if you'd like. But we just don't have a lot of, we have one service in our budget and it's the Alders and the work, you know, it's the work the Alders do. And it's the it's the work that we do to support you. And and then I guess, I mean, per MGO, the Alders do get a, and Betsy, again, maybe Betsy or Dave Schmidick is here too to help me. You know, by, per MGO, y'all do get a an increase. So I mean, I don't, I don't know the number on that because I haven't crunched it, but you know, not trying to say that, it's a good idea, but there's a very limited, very limited sources of funding in this budget, so.
That makes sense. I won't take up too much of time. I think the one thing I'll say is, I think generally where I lean is, I would rather cut Alder expenses in favor of keeping anything that the staff can use as resources, considering, yes, there's twenty Alders, but we're not full-time, or at least we're not budgeted to be. So we really, really rely on the staff and I don't want to cite any of your resources if possible. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Next person on the queue is Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I think that it's really critical that we have an informed staff. And I say that because even when I go outside of the city, I hear what other municipalities are doing and it sparks my interest to come back and do better. I think that if we are going to, as we depend upon our staff, you know, having them well-versed, because if you keep swimming in the same pool, you're swimming in the same pool. The reason that you go outside of the space is to see what others are doing and see if that will fit back into what we're doing. And so if there is some way that we can, you know, not take that away, I would be very supportive of that because, you know, yeah, that that's one of the things that I I really do strongly believe in is that training and development and the council office is the core of everything that we do. And so how you get better is to find out how other municipalities are doing it and bringing it back so that you can increase efficiencies, you know, here for us. And so I would be one that would would not want to take that away as well.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Alder Bennett?
Thank you. And I apologize in advance if any of this information was already shared. I was out a little bit. So I guess my primary question and for information that maybe you, Karen slash Council Office could bring back to us is like, how much or little is the Alder expense account used based off of the last, I don't know, five years? Including this year, I I'm like, you don't have to like call out any specific Alder, it could be all anonymous. I am just genuinely curious because I know that some Alders, you know, I I mean, for all intents and purposes, like including myself, are pretty much out of the Alder expense accounts. And there's other Alders that in their, you know, tenure of the last several years have not even touched their Alder expense account. And, you know, I think that there are trainings and events that are of significant help to Alders that helps us do our jobs better, that we otherwise wouldn't have access to with like trainees and conferences. So as I I just want to note that, and I'll get back to like staff and trainees conferences. But, you know, I recognize that some Alders are not interested in, you know, such events or maybe don't really know about it and haven't tapped into it. But I would just be hesitant to kind of discount the importance of that, you know, level of training, especially when we don't automatically receive it as Alders. That being said, I, the last thing I want to do is like take away from staff's resources. So I just really want, so what I'm saying is, I think that we need more information about how all of the resources are being used year over year so that we can more efficiently use, so that we can more efficiently go at them. I didn't, I I missed a part of the presentation with, you know, reducing expenses, so sorry about that. But I do think that one of the first things that we could look at is interns, both for the council office and for Alder interns, because I think those, the, at least on the Alder intern program, that's been something that's been underutilized from my perspective thus far. I could, I could be wrong on that. And another thing that, I don't know, and and another thing that I just want to note is that the Alder expense account was increased, I think in twenty twenty-two. So one thing that we could consider is reducing it to pre-twenty twenty-two levels. So I I just wanted to throw all of those things out there as I, ideas of things that we should be considering when we're talking about the council office budget.
Um, Karen?
Yes, a couple of things. You use about fifty percent of your Alder expense accounts across, if we look average across. So not not individuals, some individuals go to the last penny, others say, what, I have an expense account? It's very wide, right? So, but I want to put a little mark on that, hold on. So for example, over the last twenty years, you've used twenty-five to forty-seven percent of your, of the last five years, uh, over the last five years of your account, of your expense account money on the whole. Now, this year, and some of you may have noticed, y'all are spending your money at a much higher rate, faster rate than in previous years. So I think you've already hit that, that average for this year or or are close. So I I think the in-person conference probably is part of what did it. The last five years, a lot of those years, we weren't able to do in person. So folks did virtual, which of course tends to be much less expensive because you're not paying for flights and and hotels. So just heads up on that. We do know that number. And then, ooh, I got so fixated on that. All right. Yes, the interns, that was one thing I did put up on my screen was elimination of the aspire. If we do cuts, if you decide we need to do cuts, elimination of the the summer aspire intern and the the office intern and the and the Alder interns, because I do agree with you, Alder Bennett, that the Alder interns have not necessarily, that program hasn't been used to its fullest extent, but I do also need to remind you all that when you did that, when you put that five thousand in, you you allowed it to be used for other things if you chose not to use it for an intern. So some folks have used it to sort of supplement their Alder expense account. Oh, yeah, then I remember. You mentioned the increase-decrease. So I can have Betsy help me figure this out, but it actually was more than it is now prior to the pandemic. And then it came down. I don't remember which year, and then it went back up to the nineteen hundred that we're at now. So just food for thought for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Alder Martinez, and I also want to keep in, mention that it's five fifty-two. So we kind of need to wrap this up. This is not an item that we voted on, it's a discussion item, but I just wanted to to bring that up. Thank you. So Alder Martinez?
I I will be quick. As somebody who's poor, this goes against everything that I really, you know, hope for our council. But in this situation, I would be in favor of finding a way to postpone the pay increase to make sure that council staff is is taken care of because I can't do anything without the council staff. Like, especially if you're newer in this, like I've relied on them so heavily and I'm so grateful for them that I would, I would really rather see that happen and then find a way to recover that in the future. But just, just food for thought.
Thank you, Alder Martinez. And Alder Harrington McKinney?
I have a question. It says removes one-time funding for a University of Wisconsin University Alliance Student Affordable Housing Study. Could you briefly tell me what that is?
Yes, that that is in the twenty twenty-four budget that I provided as background. So yes, that was removed in there. Alder Bennett and Alder Govindarajan are probably the best to describe what that had been, but it's out of our budget in twenty twenty-four. It's not available in twenty twenty-five either, so those folks might be able to help a little bit with that.
So what was it, please?
I can jump in if that's okay. Yeah, so in twenty twenty-three, I believe, in that budget, Alder Bennett put this amendment in. We wanted to be able to work with the university to create a housing survey of UW students. It would be an all-inclusive survey, undergraduate, graduate students, non-traditional students, everything on housing. It took a while to kind of get that stuff going, but the survey was done in this most recent spring semester. And we're still waiting on getting the data back. We put in about that ninety-three hundred dollars and the university put in above ninety thousand dollars. We hired a private consultant. They did this very fancy survey and focus groups, a couple other things. And with that survey data we will be getting soon, we're, give me a second, I have to sneeze. Okay. I was expecting a sneeze. With that survey data, that should hopefully feed into the Housing Strategy Committee and what they're doing with the three buckets of housing recommendations and the common council will hopefully see that pretty soon.
Okay, I know that this is just a discussion question is that why are we doing and it wasn't incorporated in another department? Why did it land in the council?
Alder Harrington McKinney, would you mind if I just chatted with you about this after the council meeting?
No, no.
Can you explain it?
Guys, can you, can you hold on for a second, guys? I mean, it's again, five fifty-five. This was a resolution that was, that came to cancel, I don't know, last year, I think it was. So, and we voted on it, but again, I want to remind people it's five fifty-six and if this is going, we need to kind of prepare for the council meeting. So, yeah, I don't know if we're going to have enough time to go and discuss this particular topic. We we can bring this discussion back to the next meeting.
So what is the proper, can we table it? What is the proper parliamentary procedure for that?
Luckily, this isn't a, this is a discussion item, so you are, I'll bring it, I was, we'll just bring it back on the agenda. And Alder McKinney, I believe there's a, some information we can follow up with you on from twenty twenty-three when this was proposed. It was a budget amendment that was proposed. It was added in in twenty twenty-three and then taken out. Complicated, but it's no, it's not in our budget now. So just just to be clear, that that information that was attached was our current year budget and that had been removed. So we'll follow up with you about about that. Alder Bennett and Govindarajan, I'm sure will be happy to help clarify that journey that that item took over the last year and a half or so.
So I I'm going to put a couple cents in here from my perspective. Again, the purpose of this presentation or discussion is really to kind of give you a glimpse on what other agencies are experiencing with a five percent cut. Ours is fifty-eight thousand dollars, does not, you know, we have one of the smallest budgets in the city across the departments. So just put you, put yourself, put this conversation into pers- in perspective when you're talking about larger agencies across the the spectrum of the city, you know, from, all the way from the police department, the fire department, the library, the streets, those agencies that have enormous budgets. So I think the intent here is to help us all visualize the struggles that every agency head is having at this moment. So, yeah, I mean, we're talking about one of the smaller agencies in the city and yet look at the discussion we're having at the moment. So we can definitely table this and have a follow-up conversation on the next meeting. We can add it back to the agenda and and have more conversations. You guys can reach out to Karen directly and have more detailed information with the with the finance staff about it. But the intent here is to just an exercise to bring some kind of I don't know, get us in tune with what is happening around us at this time. A five percent cut is an enormous cut for most of the agencies of the city. For us, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars. I know that's a lot of money for some people, but compared to the rest of the city, it's really not that much money. So having said that, is five fifty-eight. Alder Bennett, your hand still raised. Is there anything else you want to add on the conversation on the one minute left?
You know what? I'll just send an email.
Okay, good. So I am going to actually ask for a motion to to adjourn at this moment. I know that Karen, Karen, you can go ahead and send the, it's the staff report via email and we can pick up this conversation then on the next meeting if that's, if that's okay with the body. It's, I think, it's been a long day for most of us and we have to jump in into a council meeting a little bit, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, if I get a second for that, I really appreciate it.
Second.
Okay, good. So with that said, is that a, is there a concern on recording unanimous vote to go into adjournment?
I'm sorry, who was the seconder? Who was the mover?
Me.
Duncan?
Oh, goodness, thank you.
That was, who seconded? Who seconded the motion?
Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Thank you. Thank you, President, Vice President Duncan. Okay, so is there any a a objection to recording unanimous vote on adjournment today? I don't see any concerns. Thank you so much. It was a very good discussion and see you in a few minutes. Have a a break here and talk to you guys soon. Bye-bye.